Good morning, everybody. We start, we begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have Jason.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome, everybody, to the Rockin' In Time Commissioners Meeting, May 23rd, 2024. I'm gonna go at Zoom land. I see, I see Rich, I see Jim Gates, Catherine Mann, I see Jim Gates.
You punch me in.
Jay Boosier, and is that, who's up in the top there? Is that the?
So Lieutenant Cunningham from the Sheriff's Service.
Okay, and who's up on the top?
Chris Sawyer.
Rich Sawyer. Okay, I think I got, I think I got everyone up there, right? Robin, Robin Burney too. So I think I got everybody there. And in the room, we have Jason Smith, Allison Kacowski with Commissioner Coyle.
Morning.
Godu, Leila, Chuck Nixon, and myself. So we'll start with the RFP openings.
With respect to first is the walking cooler, and I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. Doing the opening.
We're pretty doing the opening.
Physical opening.
Wow, Commissioner Coyle's doing that opening, physical opening. Can you possibly raise a Captain Stacy and Jamie Nelson in Zoom?
There's one physical opening, but that's all we have.
Right. Now I'm doing water time on this section.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion then? None on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for WWTP paving driveway opening.
Move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. We are on to consent agenda. In the packet, we have our meeting minutes. On 5/2/24.
I move to approve the May 2nd, 2024, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any additions or corrections? Is there anything that needs to be changed? All right, on the motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Surplus equipment request.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 288A and declare the light list of a computer equipment and cell phones from the IT Department surplus with the items to be properly disposed for.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just for education for people in Zoom land, these are just items, uh, equipment that are not working, broken, damaged, and every so often, we, you know, thanks to, we, um, Robin, we inventory, figure out what's no longer in certain, you know, um, yes.
Laptops and cell phones don't last forever. As much as we think they ought to.
Yes, exactly.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Right, payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,282,319 cents uh, for the period ending May 18th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on payroll? Anybody else?
A little lighter than we've been, um, probably due in part to some of the changes over in nursing and also, that's good.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
All right, on to report. Anybody have any things to share?
Well, I will just share, um, so, um, Superintendent Henry was, um, at a conference and he said he, in Florida, Miami, I think it was probably quite hot, frankly, if they had that heat wave. But he said it was, um, I spoke to him this morning, he was getting on a plane, and the reason he is not here is because he was getting on a plane. But, um, there were, um, he said he learned a lot. They've got a lot of new things to take back and bring here. In terms of the jail, there's 141 in the house today. So it's going up, it's summer, it's not unexpected. What happened, and this is what we see, like, there's an uptick with the nice weather to get outside and do things they shouldn't. Um, but otherwise, all is well. I did, um, the headline in the Seacoast online newspaper the other day was regarding to an eighteen and a half million-dollar residential sale in Rye. Um, I know Kathy was talking about it, in the last few days, we've had some significant transfer taxes, um, particularly in the Seacoast.
Was it cash?
I, I think it was, actually, but, um, anyway, um, so, um, it's nice to see.
Right.
Uh, anyway.
That's awesome.
We've got money, some money coming, revenues coming in from, uh, transfer taxes.
Right.
Tax stamps.
Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
Happy birthday to, uh, Chairman.
Happy birthday.
Sharon Shallow.
Not gonna tell you how old I am, but I do qualify for social care.
You can go to Google.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I just want to let you know, I, I did talk to the sheriff this morning, he's gonna be up in front with, uh, the major as well. Um, it's good to see, um, Rich Sawyer here. You know, so we can, we can hear from the department heads, uh, with departments later on, but, um. All right, so let's do the inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve a line, uh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, a inmate, sort of an inmate administrative transfer dated May 21st, 2024 pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 30-FB21, transferring one inmate to Merrimack County DOC, one inmate from Merrimack County DOC as recommended by the superintendent.
A second motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
It's a swap for, uh, just, um, for the best interest of both correctional departments.
Very good. On the motion, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Godu?
Yes.
Uh, yes. EverSource interconnection agreement.
Chuck, it's exciting to see this. Thank you.
He should have the cash.
Um, I'm moved to approve the EverSource interconnection agreement and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion?
Finally.
Finally, finally, uh, thank you, Chuck, for all your work with the insurance fees. Um, it's exciting to see this, it's exciting to see. And just for everyone, um, the target deadline is, the target is up and running with solar by September 25. So that's not, just over a year away, um, and that's pretty exciting. So thank you for everybody's efforts in making this happen.
Chuck, and I'm gonna add a couple of other things. The interconnection agreement with EverSource was not an easy process to begin with. Um, one of the reasons, and they actually went up to testify.
I think it should be attached to signing it, because I'm signing nothing.
It'd be attached to my chart.
I know, but this is the, I, I'm sorry.
And we have, we'll try to have one conversation, you guys, if you don't mind, but, uh, so the interconnecting, uh, the interconnection char, um, agreement was a long process. And, um, when we went up to Conker, they were saying it was just backlog, and EverSource moves
The reorganization, this is one.
So uh, this is one, um, the other one, we've concluded interviews and I'm prepared to make an offer. Um, and then the third one, we are.
Which?
Which with infection control.
Positions are we talking?
Yes, but we, there's.
And you're ready to offer something on which position?
The assistant.
Assistant.
The uh, we just, I'm just starting to set up interviews with the infection control physician now. And um, there is a one potential candidate that it's worthwhile interviewing. Um, on the other side, there is another candidate that um, uh, is here through agency that I would also like to entertain interviewing as well.
Uh, how many? How many applications do we get from director, uh, assistant director?
Uh, I received six that were validated through the process that I received from the recruiter, Autumn. Um, through those, I interviewed three individuals.
And do you, do you think any of those uh, folks would be interested? In a direct or qualified for director nursing position?
They were non-nurses.
Were non-nurses, administrative.
Yes.
Strictly.
Yes.
I'm just looking for. I'm just trying to be creative about it.
And maybe the infection, you know, infection or infection slash staff educator, but again, we need somebody more like an RN. And.
Desirable RN, I'm willing to pass up an L P N, but again, it's a skill set.
Then let me, let's face facts, we've known this for years, nursing is a tough industry right now, there's not enough people. So he's got to do what we can. Any, any more questions?
I figured nothing lost, nothing gained, I wanted to bring it forward as.
It doesn't cost us if we don't hire anyone.
I just figured it just might give us that edge to put it out there and it might, something that might go somewhere else, it's not going to get signed. I might say, wait a minute. Rockingham County, great reputation, five stars. I'll get a little sign-on bonus, maybe the salary's not quite where I want it, but I'll have that twenty thousand dollars. That might offset the difference, I, I don't know, we were just, Autumn and I were just throwing things out there like a target to kind of.
Well, I like the creative approach, I mean, because we need to do that. So, I, I guess I'm well up to try it.
So, on the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Can I mention my God do?
Yes.
All right, twenty twenty four summer discount ticket program.
I move to approve employee discount ticket agreements to Canterbury Lake Park, Front Town, Slatch Town, Water Country, Dirkswild Kingdom and Clark Streeting Post. At no charge to the county for the twenty twenty four season and to authorize the senior director of human resources to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded discussion.
How, how do we inform our employees that these discounts are available?
Um, it's on the county, goes on the county website, it'll probably go on the U K G tile or informational blog that we have for each person. We'll be putting it in the newsletter, we'll be slapping up some of them. Um, once they are approved, we'll be making these, sending it to all departments to post. Um, we send out an all email alert to all, all anybody in the county that has an email.
And it's, and when you advertise it, you advertise it as a listing or here's the list of places you can go, or are we like? Sending out an advertisement for.
There's links that.
Block bears.
So there's links, so we don't get any tickets, so all of these are links. So when we advertise it, the employee just goes on.
Here's the link to go get the discount.
Rockingham County, they put in and they're off, off to the races. Yeah.
Further question? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
How about yes? Travel and training requests.
I move to approve a travel and training request for an H R employee L P to attend the U K G Aspire twenty twenty four conference in Las Vegas, Nevada. For November eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty twenty four, at an estimated total cost of four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. As recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, secondly, under discussion.
What do we send? This is an annual conference and we usually send someone from H R each year.
Ben, I think Ben, no, he was on that agenda lots.
Yeah, well, it's nice to get that overlapping to collaborate and it's good for uh, department-wide.
Actually, since we switched, so you could you crow.
The pro dimension.
Send a match.
With all the challenges there, so it's nice to get someone from both finance and H R out there.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
I will, yes. Next, now to general leave.
I move to approve a general leave request for an environmental services employee E D with county portions of all benefits to continue for the period of May eighteenth, twenty twenty four, to the twenty second, twenty twenty four. As recommended by the senior director of human resources and senior director of long-term care.
Second.
Motion debated, seconded, any discussion on this matter? Saying none on the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
I will, yes. Now we're on to application, the C B A National Correction, unfortunately until the evening.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the county of Rockingham, New Hampshire and National Correctional Employees Union, Local one eighteen. Representing the Rockingham County Correctional Officers, effective July first, twenty twenty four, through July, I'm sorry, June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Contingent on approval of the cost items by the delegation.
Second.
Motion debated, seconded, any discussion?
A lot of hard work that went into this and uh.
I was gonna say, congratulations, Commissioner Foil.
Thank you, it's good, uh, I think it's a good place, it's gonna help. Um, with the both retention and recruitment and what we've seen is the changes we have made and thank you to the by fellow commissioners in this effort have really uh, amazingly rounded the corner in corrections, so um, I'm hopeful, you know, I think um, Commissioner Turetella, you said this, we attacked, we attacked corrections, we kind of got this in a good place.
Yeah.
And you know, going forward, we can sort of take a similar approach to tackling some of the problems with nursing, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I was gonna say the same thing, you know, coming in, what, three years ago, Commissioner Foil, I stopped at the same time. And we identified um, nursing and the corrections as priorities, so we did turn this one around. Which is great, now we can focus, I mean, everything seems to be on the right side for employment side of things, so now we can put our full one hundred percent effort into nursing side, which is gonna be a challenge, no doubt. But um, but good job on that. So on the motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I will, yes. Uh, long-term care services first call technologies.
I move to approve the first call technologies agreement for the period of one year, beginning May twentieth, twenty twenty four. With automatic renewals and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second.
Motion's been made, it's seconded, there's a, any discussion on this, Commissioner Foil?
I just had, so there was a lot of back and forth on some of the language, can you just, uh, I, I was a little confused reading all the emails.
So.
Tell where we landed.
Sure, so um, it's settled that we um, worked with the vendor in Primax and they eventually accepted all of the changes.
Okay.
Except for one, and Ja- uh, Jason George, uh, excuse me, Jason Gregoire from the attorney's office. Um, felt that what they did not modify was acceptable. Uh, and that was on the second page of the contract.
Right.
Um, in the ten point uh, three. Um, this is for the grant program, this is more of a social services-based um, software application that we will be working with uh, for the adult day program through the um, uh, the state contract, so this, the fees for this will be, uh, starting in July, will be transferred over to uh, refundable with the state grant.
But this is, so we, if we have to adjudicate disputes, it's gonna stay in Missouri?
Uh, yes, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
Also. You have other concern?
No.
So on the motion, Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Uh, grant application is July twenty-five substance abuse reduction initiative.
I move to approve an application to, for the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Law Enforcement, Substance Abuse Reduction Initiative Grant in the amount of one four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by Commissioner.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion on this?
So. I noticed in the um, there's like, how many individuals you're using? And do you have specific um? Do you have a s- specific? Uh, when you say targets, like um, time that you're gonna be, you know, allocation of time and resources and when those things are gonna happen, or how, how do you think you're gonna be utilizing the grant money in, you know, more specifically?
I think Catherine Mann's up there, maybe she can answer that for you.
Yeah, sure, so the operational side, Lieutenant Cunningham might be able to answer that better than I can. Uh, and just one modification, uh, I know you had read off the amount from the budget detail, the total request is a hundred and fifty thousand. So I just wanted to make that correction.
Um, I see Rich Sawyer there too, I don't know if he has anything to add.
That's Lieutenant Cunningham.
Oh, sorry. Lieutenant Cunningham, I, I apologize.
No worries, uh, so that money will be used for um, both uh, conducting uh, narcotics operations as well as uh, interdiction work throughout the county to disrupt the flow of narcotics that are coming into the state and through the state uh, to get to other uh, states around us. Um, so that money will be used uh, to allow the, our part, us and our partner agencies uh, to alleviate the overtime costs from our agencies, uh, and we'll be using that money to uh, conduct those operations um, with other agencies as well, to include uh, D A, agencies down in Mass, F B I, uh, so forth.
And then my follow-up question is, what, I, it references doing things out of jurisdiction. So, um, how much are we talking about? I guess my concern is I, I don't think we should be putting any resources, even grant funding to, you know, Stratford County or Hillsborough County, so um, you know, what percentage of cases are we generating in other counties as a result of this? And you know, is there a way to contain it? Because I, I think we should be Rockham focused.
Yeah, and I agree a hundred percent, so uh, in the past where there was other counties around us that did not have um, the resources that we had. Uh, we helped them out a lot uh, with um, issues they had going on. Since then, uh, those counties have stood up uh, similar um, task forces like we have now. Uh, so that's allowed us to focus more of our attention uh, into the Rockingham County, so I'd say, I'd say eighty percent of our work. Ninety, probably eighty-five percent of our work is within county, I'm, I'm a strong advocate of keeping everything in this county, this is my focus. Uh, to alleviate the drug problem uh, here. Uh, sometimes, of course, we have to go out of area just to follow up on a case, uh, we obviously try to minimize that with um, our part, our uh, counties around us having uh, similar task forces, we do um, work with them and pass cases off when necessary. Um, so that's how I plan to address that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Further questions? Commissioner Badu, do you have any?
No.
On the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Badu?
Yes.
And I will, yes. All said. All right, now we're on to department head updates, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go Jaden Smith first.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, today's your day, usually you.
Uh, we're just in survey prep mode, we continue to um, work diligently to reduce staffing and make necessary um, reductions when needed, and when there's no call-ups, we don't backfill. And so forth and so on, um. Uh, let's see, we also won a standing ovation award with leading age uh, made in New Hampshire. Uh, so that was a really great thing for the community. Uh, Jonathan um, Timmichum is the new program manager uh, for the brand pilot program, so guest started. They also hired um, uh, a couple L and A, so happy about that.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's it?
Uh, well, let's see.
What else you got?
We uh, also hosting a Memorial Day service on Thursday, May twenty-third at two in the atrium in collaboration with Brookhaven Hospice. To honor those lost lives um, by our country, so we welcome all to join. And other than that, yeah, survey, Catherine's been taking most of my time.
All right, cheers, thank you, Allison.
Um, morning, um, open enrollment, we are July, um, really happy to kind of, uh, as of yesterday afternoon. We have a possible enrollment of three hundred and seventy-six employees to get through this, we have sixty-four that are complete. So we're on seventeen percent, thirty-five are in process or incomplete at nine point three, and we have two hundred and seventy-seven that have not started the process. I have made some laminated forms that I'm gonna get out to each of the departments to ask you to put them by the time clocks, especially over the sheriff's office and the Department of Corrections, they're not, there will be no exceptions to not getting it done because the system is open twenty-four seven. We've been fielding a lot of phone calls, gotten a lot of good feedback, people feel very comfortable about what they're seeing on the system. I also am starting to send out um, notices about evaluations. Um, I need all evaluations for this fiscal year into the H R office by the fourteenth of June. So that we can prep everything um, and be ready to go for seven-one for all those college, you'll be getting a lot of payroll change notices that'll be pushed out. But we cannot send those out unless we have evaluations in for those uh, C B A union members. Um, so please get those to us, we're hosting a retiree meeting um, on benefits on June fourth and June sixth. Please, um, we've gotten a kind of a call-out, all arms call-out, we're having a blood drive on five twenty-nine from two to five. We have very limited um, enrollees in that, you do have to enroll ahead of time for that. So if you um, know of anybody or know of anybody in the Rockingham County community that would like to partake in the blood drive. It is on five twenty-nine in the Hilton auditorium. We are running our wellness chocolate uh, cooking class on five thirty, uh, that should be a lot of fun, I know we've gotten some feedback. There's um, we can only host up to twenty-five for that class, so please feel free to get everybody signed up as soon as possible. It should be a fun time, um, and I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Shaw, Anderson.
Um, let's see. Last night, the delegation voted to approve by almost CNN's vote, only one, no vote.
Two.
There was two, there was a second?
Yeah, of course.
Oh, I didn't see the one up front, okay, it'd be in the back row, you don't, couldn't see all of it. So um, so I guess with two no votes uh, only with fifty-six present. Um, the proposed uh, elected officials salary changes were, were voted by the delegation. So one half of that increase, you know, last half of fiscal year twenty twenty-five will have those numbers incorporated. Those numbers are included in the subcommittee proposed budgets. Uh, which the executive committee will be going over tomorrow, so it's a reminder for department heads and everyone that tomorrow morning, nine-thirty in Hilton is the executive committee meeting to go over the subcommittee proposed budget. Obviously, things go quickly from there because the public notice about to get out ASAP, as far as about the June fifth. Um, public hearing to be conducted by the executive committee on their proposed budget. Um, we hope to um, have the executive committee do the official okay on the commissioners' recommendation as far as contract cost items, uh, so I did get those to, to Leila to because executive committee likes to have the official, like in letter format, as far as a contract cost item amounts. To in turn propose for vote by the whole delegation, which will happen on June nineteenth. Um, that's it, another quick reminder, the target date for um, the overall vote by delegation is June nineteenth. Six o'clock in the Hilton, as far as the overall county budget. Um, I've not seen yet on the D R A website, um, I've not yet seen the equalization survey. Uh, once I do see that, I will know the percent county uh, tax proportions to all the Rockingham County communities. Um, once I do see that report, I can take those percentages multiplied by, you know, the aggregate total of taxes and I can send like an worksheet through Leila that can go to the commissioners that if you're, you know, reaching out to your constituent towns you'll have within rounding.
Yeah.
What that aggregate tax dollar amount's gonna be for that uh, Rockingham County community. Um, let's see, um, I just got word that um, we are okay with our letter of intent for the Moose Plate Grant, so thank you commissioners for helping out with that. So that was good news.
How about Pro share?
Pro share, very good news there, so it was only, I think, a couple days ago. Um, that basically we, we got a, the county's cut the emails around about what the expected pro share amount's gonna be. Um, while I thought, while we budgeted five, three-quarter million, just conservatively, because sometimes that number can fluctuate. Um, and, but then based on we were trending for where our six thirty cost report really was, or where it looks like it's going. Um, I was expecting seven to quarter million, uh, that's what you see as far as estimated for the, even the subcommittee proposed budget. Um, it's gonna come in at four hundred thousand dollars over that, so seven point six five.
Yeah.
So. So that means less use of fund balance.
Which is good, because we're.
We need it.
We need it.
So that brings down, I think, I think a little bit lower, so you'll see that reflected in the executive committee proposed budget that the six thirty, twenty-four anticipated number will increase to that number for pro share revenue. Which means our expected use of fund balance should be down just, I think, a little bit above five million now instead.
That we're utilat.
Right, and we had budgeted like seven million plus above that, so that's good, so we're, we'd be utilizing plus and even half of what we had budgeted, so that's.
Shaw, on the budget, what, was the only change on the non-county?
Well, and the elected officials, in elected officials, so yeah, five departments budgets are affected by the elected official salary votes.
Yeah.
So, and that affects like another, you know, few lines, you know, employer retirement for, you know, two of the departments. And then obviously employer fight on all five.
But as far as what was in control of the commissioners, our side of the budget?
Correct, only those.
Eleven thousand dollars extra in non-county.
Net compared to, to the current fiscal year, yeah, so Haven was approved for their monies, they changed the gather amount. And I think one of the new.
Yeah.
Friends of Drug Court, um, they slightly, I think, shaved off a little bit from drugs, friends of the interest drug court.
Yeah.
Because they're first year one, that's, I guess, that's what their mental.
Pretty good.
Reducing it, but yeah, so overall, I think, you know, very good.
It's a reflection of what a great job every, all the departments had, did in preparing their budgets, that's how I see that.
Anything else?
Um, just obviously some other grant work, um, we do have hopefully the final round, um, two individuals for interviewing today. For the grant writer, which I'll be very happy about, because um, this is like the season for getting some grant applications um, in. Um, because again, things could be cyclical as far as where some of these, you know, application windows are.
Yeah.
And um, and we do have uh, an E M P G grant with the sheriff's office that I have to circle back on. But that could be significant as far as for funding of dispatch like consoles and even like a generator as far as for the new building, so.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that would probably involve a county match, so probably maybe, you know, if we're able to get it, we might have to come to the commissioners as far as sheriff's office, and I come to the commissioners and, and ask maybe use a little bit of the uh, loss driving money towards X. You can, you, because we're only a twenty-five thousand budget in the general fund for a, you know, for a match.
Yeah.
Um, for, for a grant that's not fully contingent, fully covered by grant funds. Um, because sometimes dispatch ones are like eighty percent, twenty percent.
Yeah.
Match, so, um, but again, that is allowed to have a, a federal grant match as far as in, over in the expenditure category six point two.
Yeah.
And we've done that before with a, with a different grant, so. Um, again, there's lots of things going on, obviously.
Yeah.
So.
Did you, Matt, did you want to mention the other? The other grant that we're getting from federal government or the sheriff's console and tie, state tie-in?
Um, well, I think that is the E M P G is the.
Oh, that's.
Console, yeah, as far as it was, it was not going to include um, like a generator to help service like that, I can make sure they always had power. Um, obviously, if that becomes part of the grant, that's gonna be a significant increase. And I think we're also working on a COPS grant as well, that's it.
That's what I'm talking.
That's uh.
Seven hundred and ninety-five thousand we got awarded from.
Yeah, and for that, it's kind of strange, because I'll have to be setting up the chair and be setting up the sheriff as users in the Just Grants system, we have not had to do that for any previous grant before.
But that's, that's good too.
Yes, yes, again, all these help, you know, extend services for the Rockingham County community.
Yeah.
So, and sometimes it involves capital improvements as well, so that's, that's.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Bye.
Good, all right.
Yes.
Now I'm gonna go to Zoom land, I'm gonna go uh.
Of course.
I'm gonna go to Catherine Mann.
Good morning, uh, yeah, so um, actually touching upon that grant, uh, so the uh, congressional money that's now moved on to uh, COPS grant application, so we'll be applying for that over the next couple of weeks. Um, there's no match component with that piece, so that is the state core tie-in, and that's the dispatch consoles, the actual computer equipment itself. Uh, the E M P G grant that Chuck was just discussing, that's gonna be more for either dispatch furniture or possibly some generators. I know Chuck and uh, our office are working on that, trying to figure out what we can apply for uh, and circle back on that. Um, so we'll have those documents to you probably in a couple of weeks, um, the deadlines for that are June and July. So uh, we're gonna get that wrapped up for you and get it in front of you for approval, uh, but other than that, uh, business as usual.
Right, very good, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Catherine Stacy.
Morning, um, business is actually been pretty busy over here. Right now, we have reached uh, four point six million dollars for transfer taxes month, I mean, we're gonna go over, you know, obviously from here we're really, really doing great, and I'll tell you, two cash deals, one was eight point five and the other one was seventeen point one. Seventeen point one is the one in Rye and the eight point five is in Portsmouth, they were both cash deals in their houses. They are.
Can I ask you a question, Kathy, how the heck do you afford paying cash for that Rye house? Is that you, right? Did you buy that house?
I didn't buy that house. I wish, I wish, anyway, everything's going well and Tuesday was Becky's forty-fifth anniversary here at the.
Wow, that's awesome, wow.
It really is awesome, it really is awesome.
Can you congratulate her for us?
I certainly will, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Robin, in I T.
Good morning, um, all is well in the I T department, I am currently in a rush to spend some of the grant money that we received from the N H D S department, we're doing some system reviews, we're buying some things. We're setting up some other systems, so we're moving along rapidly with that, um, with the deadline of June thirtieth, so we're, we're moving. Um, also, just to put it out there, you approved the surplus list and thank you very much for that. But for the other departments, we will be scheduling a pickup in the next few weeks, so if we have not reached out to you to schedule that, just let us know. And we'll make sure to get you on the list and we'll pick up, pick up your I T junk and have that on its way away from us. Um, also, just continue to work on cybersecurity awareness, as you know, you get emails from me quite often. Uh, but uh, I'm just gonna be the squeaky, squeaky wheel and hopefully it'll do us, do us some good.
Your training, public service announcement, your training.
All right, thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Jew Gates. And, and Rich, the Rosswee.
Good morning, everyone, um, all is well in facilities, we've been um, this week it's been A C startup, A C repair, A C install, it's been all about the A Cs this week. Um, today, the electrical system in the delegation building is upgraded so that we can put the A Cs out to R F P. Um, we did have a, a pretty well-attended site visit for that structural work that they need done in that building. We're looking forward to what those proposals are gonna look like next week. Um, Rich has been doing a great job this week, I've been a little bit laid up and all's, all's rolling right along, we're doing well, thank you.
Who do I, is uh, Jay Lucier with the Joe, D O C?
No, Chef's.
Chef's fine, all right, we don't have anybody from corrections, right?
No, they're traveling, both, uh, Major Banfield and. Um, and Superintendent Henry are on their way back.
All right, I'm gonna go, I think we've got everybody so far, I'm gonna go to Leila.
Oh, I have nothing.
Nothing to report? Okay. All right, so I think we're done, um. And you might go to new business, old business, I don't know if anyone has anything. Allison has something.
Um, it's been pretty busy with the uh, so close, uh, benefit open enrollment, but also the planning for that. One of the areas that we do do spend some time is uh, is on motivate me, it allows people that are on the Cigna platform to gain incentives by having um, specific types of target goals for them to complete. I might be a mammogram, a colonoscopy, it could be doing a five K race. Um, it's the incentive of six hundred for the employee and two hundred for the spouse. Um, I have till the end of day today, we're a little backlog over there, and Julie reminded me last night that we have to kind of determine if we're gonna move some of the um, goals around, which I do want to do because we have some stale stuff that's there. And we looked at utilization on that, so I'm not gonna propose to change the amounts, but I am gonna go forward, if you don't mind, to change some of the goals to make it more enticing for those folks to just kind of reengage in the platform.
Maybe you could explain, I think that, that people in terms of the reporting, how you do the reporting for that. I think for anyone watching this in Zoom land, it's not always.
Yeah, so if anybody has like um, a service that, like a colonoscopy, a mammogram, an annual uh, exam. Yeah. So if anybody has like um a service that like a colonoscopy, a mammogram, an annual uh exam, a dental cleaning, um or Cigna under the Cigna platform, they'll register, they will let us know coming into July after the year ends in June. They'll provide us with the name of the person and if they've done one of those types of things. Um if it's a dental, we just need an explanation of benefits from the provider's office that just confirms that you've had your dental. Actually, does not for the dental. You just have to attest to the fact that you've had two cleaning services within the 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 uh period. Um we do ask that if you're doing like um a yoga class or a five K class, a five K run or something like that, that you just somehow provide us with a registration or a confirmation or something like that. We don't get too challenged by it, but we do have to show something because it is Cigna dollars and we have to report back to them our, you know, how we've gone about uh attesting to the fact that those those things have been completed. So it is pretty easy. Uh the spouse lets two hundred dollars, because would you want to engage in a spouse, it's better to get those wellness things done early in life as you go along, because the sooner you find out something, the sooner treatment or follow-up care that you need to have versus waiting long periods of time that, you know, moves your uh use of uh your healthcare plan a little bit higher. So that's kind of, we've kind of put some of those incentives in there for spouses to engage in. So that's how it's done. It's been well received. It's nice because in August, once we be able to establish that and we report into Cigna, then those monies become available. We pay them out. You'll get a check for, you know, if it is you and your spouse, you'll get a check for, you know, eight hundred dollars or it goes through the payroll for eight hundred dollars. If it's just you, it's six hundred. But it doesn't mean you have to do all six hundred or all two hundred. It's anything within that scope that's on motivate me. Any of those things that you possibly can apply or use for, you'll get that amount and a nice, so it's a nice thing in the summer months that we kind of do it that way. So coming towards the end of the summer, you kind of have some money to kind of keep you going through the summer into the uh September months. So.
Very good. Okay. Uh any other new business or old business? I don't think so. Well, we'll take a motion. If coming on public?
I have two.
You have two. I have one. Yeah, we, it's kind of combined.
And who's gonna be in these?
Robin.
Robin.
Robin. I have one with Chuck. Chuck and I have one.
Okay, so how how do you want to handle? We'll, we'll go into non-public and then.
I move to enter into non-public for seven to ninety-one A colon three personnel.
Motion debated. Seconded on the motion, Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great weekend.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We keep, we, we are out of non-public. We had five non-public sessions. I'm moving to seal all the minutes of each session indefinitely because they could adversely affect the reputation of someone other than this board. And there is no uh definitive end date for any of these issues.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded, um to indefinitely seal on the motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I move to adjourn.
And motion seconded and seconded. All of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned.
Okay, this.